We do, okay. Today, we're going to have Commissioner Andrew lead us in the pledge, please, Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads in prayer? Father, we come to you this day, we are so grateful to be here gathered as your people of Garden City, and today, we ask that you move mildly through this meeting, give us wisdom on each and every decision, and we are so grateful for the blessing that you have given our city and the surrounding area. Father, we are blessed to live in Kansas, and we are so grateful for the way in which you have knit us together. We ask that you protect our first responders, and Father, also, just be mindful of our military, who are both at home and across the city. And we give you glory and honor, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the March 19 meeting? Not they stand approved.
You want to go back up to the top floor and reorganization, Mayor?
Oh, yeah. Let's do that. I was jumping ahead here a little bit. You want to lead us?
Oh, I can, yes.
I jumped.
Two A is the reorganization of the Board of Commissioners, and I will segue over to C. Lynn to handle affairs from here, but the first step in this, that she will administer the oath of office to the newly appointed Commissioner, Shannon Dick.
For both of us?
Yes.
Other hand. I can't hold my right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the City of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
Faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Get all the action.
Well, thank you.
Okay, A two is the seating of the newly elected ordinance commissioners accomplished. A three is an opportunity for Commissioner Dick to provide some comments, and following Commissioner Dick's comments, we will take a short break and meet across the hall and have a reception or a stake, and we'll announce a time where we reconvene back over here.
Thank you. I first like to give thanks to everybody, to my mom and my dad, to my wife and my kids, and my friends and family who made me who I am. I also like to thank the commissioners who believed in me to put me in this position. I also like to thank the city staff, who has helped me get up to speed so far. I'd also like to thank everybody that I ran into around town that's congratulated me and wished me well and said I do a good job. I also like to thank the people that thought that I would do a good job, but I ran into them, and they didn't say I wouldn't do a good job, at least to my face. And I know everybody's here actually for the cake, especially police chiefs, so I'll keep this quick, but I do want to talk a second about city growth, because this came up in the goal-setting retreat that I attended. So I moved back to Garden City to raise a family, because I believe in this community and what Garden City stands for. In kindergarten, my daughter made best friends right away with the girl that became her best friend through the third grade. One day last year, she came home with a gift from her. It's the headdress, and she was very proud of it, and has so she could wear it. This spring break, the girl told me, told my daughter, that they went to another town to see if they want to move there. They love living here, but they thought there might be other jobs or other opportunities in another town, it might be jobs or housing or a larger ethnicity group. This kid is brilliant. She's going to be a doctor or a surgeon, or she might be the first person to lead a mission to Mars. So why should we grow? It's because I believe our community has it right. We need to give as many opportunities as possible. Every community has a brand, and we need to grow our brand so that everyone that wants to continue positively to our community can. Our families that have some of the best and brightest kids, the ones that we're investing in, shouldn't feel like they need to move to a different community to have opportunities. We need them to be telling their friends and their families that they need to be moving to Garden City instead. Opportunities are created through growth. We've had researchers that come through Garden City and say that they wish that they could stay for the whole day. We have researchers that come to Garden City for the day that say they wish they could stay here for a week. We have researchers that come here for a week that end up staying here for months. We have other cities, we have other counties, we have other states that come to Garden City to see how we do it, and not just economically, but how our community has been able to grow together and embrace diversity as a strength, not as an obstacle to overcome. It is not an accident that Garden City is like this. From our city founders, the Fulton Brothers, Charles Stevens and Buffalo Jones, to the Finneps, to the great leadership that the Commission has had, such as Bonnie Tally and Melvin Dell, to our amazing city manager and the best city staff in the state, and even to the great organizations that make up our community, it is not an accident that Garden City is like this. These people, past and present, have allowed our city to be, to have the ability and the opportunity to grow. Not every city has this. Some have the ability, but do not have the opportunity. Some have the opportunity, but do not have the ability. If we have smart, strategic, sustainable, and opportunities to grow that are good fits, we should work our hardest to make it happen. We won't always have the options that we have in 2019, so we need to take advantage of when we can. This community is something I believe in, and I think we should strive to grow as much as possible, to give everyone the ability to work, live, and thrive here, from the fifth-generation farmers to the first-generation high schoolers. I want our vision of a community to be one that people can, as many people as possible can experience and take advantage of. And then, like we saw at the end of the, what Jennifer did with the big pool, and I know that was a long, long meeting, so it's good to go re-go over that quote at the end of the presentation, and this is from the high school survey about the big pool, and the question was, "If you could tell the City Commission anything you want to see with this project, what would you tell them?" And this is from a high schooler, sophomore, so about 15 years old, and he said, "What would you tell the City Commission? Don't stop what you do. Keep making things grow and expand. Once that stops, everything stops. Just keep growing." It is my duty to ensure that the world continues to grow here. Thank you for this opportunity.
All right, take a break for 15.
That sounds good. Reconvene at 1:20.
Three.
Please join us. Everybody's welcome.
At this time, we have public comment. This is a time when anyone can address the commission that's not on the agenda and bring up pretty much anything you want to. We just limit you to five minutes, and you have to state your name when you come up to the podium, so is there anyone that would like to address us? Okay. Moving on.
Item 6A, under consideration of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center and Kansas Children's Service League to allow the mayor to proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Entertained motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. All those favor that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Is there anybody here from either of those organizations that would like to have a speak? Yeah, please come on up. Stakes your name, and we'll probably have the mayor read the proclamation and take a picture with you when you're done.
My name's Lila Mumgarth. I'm with the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center.
And I'm Cecilia Douglas with Kansas Children's Service League.
And we just want to say thank you, and we also want to invite the city to wear blue this Friday, it's a wear blue day, to show child abuse awareness, and then we have some other events going on throughout the month, and same as KCSL, and if you follow our Facebook page, you'll kind of see those events.
Very good. Okay, I'll read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. Whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy and trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities, and whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing safe, stable nurturing relationships for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now, therefore, I, Dan Frank, as the mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2019 Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garden City, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Sign and seal the second date of April 2019. Dan Frank as the mayor."
It might have you about.
Please. Brandon, we'll have to think of a word.
Trust people in front of them.
One, two, three.
Might still have been in there.
Right on time.
Mayor, if you'd like, we'll jump to 10A. We have a scheduled 1:30 public hearing. Moving forward in the agenda to 10A, Roman numeral 10, item A, a 1:30 scheduled public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve the ordinance to establish the creation of a community improvement district for Garden City Plaza LLC. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2829-2019. Caleb?
Or Melissa.
Or Melissa.
Or the other?
We open our public hearing.
Mayor, you have to open up the hearing.
Okay, we'll open up the hearing for the Garden City Plaza Community Improvement District. Okay?
The governing body on February 5, 2019, accepted the petition to create a community improvement district for the Garden City Plaza. On February 23, the governing body adopted Resolution 2793-2019, which established today for the public hearing. This will be the final step the CID needs to take before the governing body before it is created. The Garden City CID will assist with rehabilitation of the property generally located at 2200 Kansas Avenue. Currently, the shopping plaza is home to J.C. Penney, The Buckle, and Trade Home Shoes, just to name a few of the businesses there. The request for a CID, which will be the 1% additional sales tax that they'll collect, will be used to make improvements such as, but not limited to, the facade, canopies, paving, sidewalks, including the parking lot. The property in the proposed CID would include the entire shopping plaza, but does not include the former Sears Building. A market feasibility analysis has been provided for your review. The alternatives before the governing body are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance, they may not approve the attached ordinance, the governing body may defer action until a later date. There are no fiscal obligations from the city under the CID, and staff recommends alternative number one. We do have the applicant here as well.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Ask it an attorney if he wants to.
You want to state your name, sir?
Sure. My name's Rick Yaxel. I'm an attorney from Liberal. One of the community's commissioners comes over to see what Garden City does and how you do it periodically. I represent Garden City Plaza LLC. As Melissa said, they are the owner of what's known as the Garden City Plaza on East Kansas. She gave you the address. I would imagine most of you are familiar with that property. I know I am, and I don't live here, but I get up here a lot. It's the part that Garden City Plaza owns, of course, has a lot of retail shops. All of those are rented to different tenants. Most of them are national brand tenants. This particular client owns shopping centers or plazas in several other places in Kansas, Hays and Liberal being two of them. You have, I think, in your packet probably a copy of our petition, and attached to that is a map, Exhibit B, which shows you kind of in color the area that will be within the community improvement district. Exhibit A is the legal description, not that it'll mean much to anybody, but the map will show you and give you a general idea of what's involved. As you can see from that map, the, I guess, the old Sears Building and the parking lot in front of that will not be part of this, and the reason for that is that that property is under a separate owner. We don't own any portion of that. What my client intends to do is make about a little over $1.5 million of improvements to the property that will be encompassed within the CID. A lot of that will be the front, parking, and basically the reason for this is to make that whole facility owned by my client look a lot better. There will be an aesthetic improvement, obviously, from these improvements. That's a fairly high visibility area out there, as are most shopping centers in these small towns. And so by making these improvements, I think it'll make that area look better. I think the community will feel better about, you know, that property. And our experience, anyway, has been that when we finish these improvements, it'll increase traffic to the retailers there, the tenants, which will in turn, of course, increase their business. One of the other things this does is it makes it easier for us, as vacancies may occur, to get people in, and it also makes it easier for us to retain tenants that are there currently. So it's a very good deal for my clients, also a good deal for the tenants. So what we're asking is that that area that's on the map and that is described legally on Exhibit A be established as a CID or community improvement district. What that means is, as I think Melissa said, those retailers there for sales will charge an extra 1% sales tax above what is, people are paying now and what's being charged. And the proceeds from that sales tax, it'll go like the rest of the sales tax monies. It'll go into the state. As I understand it from the statute, the state holds it in a separate fund, and then they will disperse it at least quarterly to the city, who will then in turn disperse it to the owner. Now, this sales tax goes for a period of 22 years, or as long as, or at the point when all of these improvements, the 1.5 million, have been paid in full, whichever should occur first. You know, I've been involved in economic development a lot in Liberal. I was on the Economic Development Council for 15 years. I don't consider myself an expert, but I'm fairly familiar with economic development tools that cities have and that states have and that cities can make use of. The neat thing about the CID, from your standpoint as a commission, is it's kind of a no-risk deal as compared to other incentives that you have available or that you may offer from time to time to others. The owner has a loan. The owner's already talked to a lender. The loan is lined up to pay for the cost. The city's not obligated on the loan in any way. There's no increase in property taxes. We're not asking for a tax abatement. We're not asking for any reduction in the sales tax which you currently collect and currently comes back to you. So it really is, I mean, it's a good deal for us as the landowner because it improves the property. We think it's a good deal for the tenants. And to the end, that you think that it will make your community look better, which I think it will, and increase retail traffic there, it's good for the city. But again, I want to emphasize, it doesn't cost the city anything. We, these improvements will probably be done within a year, something like that, so they're already there. We're continuing to pay off, obviously, on the loan, like we, like any commercial loan. The sales tax payments come in, but the city will not be required to spend any funds whatsoever. And again, probably one of the few economic development tools where you can say that as a governing body. So anyway, you probably have some other items in the packet. If you've got any questions, Bob Selecta is here. He is the property manager for the client. Just so you know, they have done one of these in Hays recently, within the last 60 days. One was approved in Liberal. The next step, if you approve this, will be the execution. Obviously, you'll have to publish a resolution of the ordinance, and then we will execute with the city, let's call it a development agreement. Generally, that's prepared by whoever your bond counsel is, and I think they're pretty straightforward, at least the one in Liberal certainly was. So anyway, any questions? Yes?
Mr. Yaxel, thank you for coming. What was the additional 1%? What will be the final sales tax in the district?
I don't know.
Eight?
What would be the additional sales tax?
The total sales tax with the addition of the 1% in your district?
Well, it's 8.95, so it'd be 9.95.
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to say I appreciate the market feasibility and thank you for outlining everything. And I know that we initially thought this was, I still think it's a really great opportunity to really bring up a property, especially that's located in, I think, an important part. And I know the improvement's hopefully going on just across the street. I was really, your vacancy, I see that's increased over time. Is this something that you're hoping to decrease? Because I see it's at, I mean, recently it's at 15, 2017 was 18.61, and 2018 was 15.29. Is that part of what you're hoping to address as far as your vacancy percentage?
Commissioner, yes. One of the, as I mentioned the last time we met, one of our plans for the outcomes of a renovation, as we're proposing, is the fact that we have the majority of our tenants, nationally-based tenants, necessarily operate even in the state of Kansas as their home office. And what we're trying to do is to create an environment in our renovation as such that when they go into their boardrooms and they make decisions on who stays and who goes, as they are doing right now, since we've seen these numbers decrease, that hopefully Garden City would be on the side of the ledger, that those stores would stay open. We have seen those numbers dip. Part of that is, if I'm not mistaken, all but one of those was a decision by a retailer that no longer exists on the planet Earth. Those were bankruptcies, where those tenants just simply went out of business, and we just happened to have them as a tenant at that time. This will put us in a position, we feel, that we can add something to our side of the discussions when we go in and try to encourage people to come to Garden City and a new store in this location, so. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to approve the, any of these funds going to be used for the parking lot?
Yes, sir. And we have, our estimates were to also include a, what they call an overlay, where we would actually mill down our portion of the parking lot, at least that portion out front, and some of those around on the backside, but mostly out in front, and then put down another two to three-inch top on top of that.
Yeah, that'd be good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
We'll see.
We appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you. Anybody in the audience that'd like to comment, public comment? Commissioners, anything else? Okay, I'll close the hearing. And what's the ordinance number?
2829-2019.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2829-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2829-2019 for the CID project at the Plaza, Garden City Plaza LLC. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Move back to the beginning of the agenda. We were ready for 6B. The governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Sheila Whitman on behalf of the Clarion Inn for approval of an aircraft landing in the corporate limits of the city on Thursday, April 4, 2019, between 5:45 and 7:00 p.m. at the Clarion Inn for a conference pursuant to Code Section 1471. We believe this is consistent with other requests that we get. Its only difference is, is that we got this one before a city commission meeting. A lot of times, we get these the day of the event, so we appreciate Sheila getting this on time. I don't think we have anything to add and would recommend approval of the aircraft landing inside the corporate limits.
I had a quick question. Because I saw Mr. Corrigan had raised the concern about blowing debris and those kind of things, I assume that there'd be insurance coverage for any property damage that happened. Just thinking, it is kind of middle of town.
Helicopter.
Not that, I mean, there's helicopters that land in the middle of town all the time, but I just, I, since that was raised, I thought it was a valid question and something to consider.
Sure. With respect to the liability of the city, I'd refer that to Randy.
No, I mean, responsibility of the property owner.
Could debris fly? It would be the responsibility.
I doubt that they operate a helicopter without insurance. I'm sure it's a requirement, and of course, the property owner has insurance too. So I would assume that the property owner and the operator of the aircraft have worked that out in their arrangement. I mean, it's, I think it would be beyond pale to think that someone operated an aircraft without insurance.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the request as presented.
Is there a second? Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the aircraft landing at the Clarion Inn on April 4, 2019, from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider the following request from Stacy Carr, executive director, on behalf of Beef Empire Days. Many of these requests could be granted or considered administratively. The two that we identified that needed to go before the governing body were, number one, the waiver of the $2,500 carnival deposit fee and $300 per day fees from May 17 to the 26th, and the use of the West Greens at Lee Richardson Zoo on Saturday, June 8. The closure of the drive, the drive-in gates, and the waiver of half of the fees associated with closing the drive-through of the zoo.
Is this same as last year?
Yes.
Is it? Yes? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the waiver of the $2,500 carnival deposit fee and $300 per day, daily fee from May 17 to the 26, 2019. Do we make this as a full motion or separate for the two different items, or just one full motion?
One.
One full motion. And then the use of the greens at Lee Richardson Zoo from 8 to 7 on Saturday, June 8 for the annual check wagon and entertainment in the park.
I'll second.
There's a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
This time, we're ready for a report of the city manager. I'm going to ad lib and add a few items since it was super short, otherwise. First of all, I'd like to introduce the commission and the community to Jamie Stewart, our new communications and project manager. So she's back there. Welcome aboard, Jamie. This is her second day, so she's learning the ropes quickly. Comes to us most recently from First United Methodist Church, where she served in a similar capacity, and we're excited to have her on our team. Also, updates which have been covered by the media, and I plan on giving hopefully more detailed updates at the April 16 meeting because they developed late last week before we could put together a thoughtful agenda item. But the Starbond project has reached another checkpoint in the process. The bonds were, the sale of the bonds was approved, and we closed on those on Thursday. That required a step which made it necessary for the Department of Commerce to review one additional time and approve it, and we received that in time to get all the documents sent off for the closing, and we successfully closed. The, you know, what does that mean? I think in short, it means the money's in place. This project, albeit a very large project, turns into sort of a, what would normally happen in the construction of a building or the development of a property, submittal of design engineering plans, those types of things, to local staff who reviews those and gives those the go-ahead, and then construction commences and is inspected. So that's sort of the world we know. We're not a stranger to really large construction projects in recent history, and so we're glad to have reached that milestone, and we'll give a more detailed update and invite the developer to do so as well, from the things that they can speak to at your next meeting. Also, House Bill 2033, which was the piece of legislation that would make okay under state statute, the sales tax ballot issue that was approved by the voters in November of 2017, that passed the floor of the Senate last week, 39 to 0, meaning that the House Bill 23 has passed both houses. There is a difference in the two bills. The Senate added a paragraph which gave sort of a fix, I would characterize it as, to a situation. to a situation where the sales tax was approved, but the statutory authority to do so was not yet in place. And so the choices for... For the legislature are, at least for the House side of it, is to concur with the changes, which would then send the bill to the governor or for the bill to be worked in conference committee. We would prefer the first of those two options, but that may not be the case. So it sort of remains to be seen. But at this point, it is good news that it's passed both chambers, and we're optimistic that there'll be a resolution to that situation quickly. And now for the ones that were on the agenda, or the one that was on the agenda. This is a monthly sales tax report from Service and Finance. You'll see that it represents an uptick. That's exciting. No other reports on this agenda, so I'll draw your attention to item eight, the meetings of note. I'm not sure if any of those require RSVPs, but if they do, please coordinate those with C-Lin.
I was interested on the Southwest Power Pool presentation. So is that... Who is actually invited to that?
Sure, good question.
I was kind of interested. I didn't know if it was something that was valuable to attend or not, so.
Mike, would you like to address that?
Certainly. Commissioners, in the Public Utilities Advisory Board, there were some questions on what was the Southwest Power Pool's function? How did Garden City fit into all of that? We asked someone from SPP if they could come up. The COO of Southwest Power Pool will be here to discuss what the Southwest Power Pool does, where Garden City fits into the big picture. And so the Public Works Utility Advisor... Or the Public Utilities Advisory Board will be invited. And through KMEA, we invited any other elected official from any of the surrounding communities that are part of KMEA. They're welcome to attend as well.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
With that, I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance, item nine A. If everything looks good to you there, the appropriate motion would be to approve ordinance number twenty-four eighty, dash, two thousand nineteen A.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-four eighty, dash, twenty nineteen A.
I'll second.
Second?
Commissioner Burns.
Burns. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appropriations ordinance twenty-four eighty, dash, two thousand nineteen A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ready for item ten B now. The governing body has asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be Resolution number twenty-eight oh-six, dash, two thousand nineteen. It would remove a violation of twenty-one oh-six Denison.
Yes, this is your typical resolution authorizing renewable nuisance conditions at twenty-one oh-six Denison in the front and rear yards. Our hopes are is that with spring cleanup going on right now, maybe they'll take care of some of that and before this comes around, have to be taken care of. But at this point, no action has been taken from the property owners.
Okay. Entertainer motion for Resolution twenty-eight oh-six.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-eight oh-six, dash, twenty nineteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution twenty-eight oh-six, dash, two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Under Section twelve, New Business Item A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve Task Order Number Nine between the City of Garden City and HNTB for the air traffic control voice switch and monitoring system at Garden City Regional Airport. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. Typically, when we come to you with projects, they are ninety percent funded by the FAA and ten percent funded by the City of Garden City. This, however, is an exception to the rule. The equipment in the air traffic control tower is not FAA-eligible for funding as well as it's not eligible for KDOT funding as well. So this is a hundred percent paid out of the City of Garden City's airport budget fund, and this project is pretty complex with the entire interface of the air traffic control communication system and the recording system that the controllers use to speak to pilots, ground vehicles, and also the Kansas City Center. So it's quite complex. So we're working with HNTB, who's our aviation consultant, to work through this project, do the bid documents and everything. That's what all is included in the task order that you're approving. The total project is estimated at about $320,000. And we are looking if this gets approved and we're going forward, probably bid that out in mid-May. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Task Order Number Nine between the City of Garden City and HNTB for the air traffic control voice switch and monitoring system at the airport. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Task Order Number Nine.
I was going to say, anything at the airport is expensive, but I mean, I understand. So that... Yeah, that was a lot of money, but I mean, I appreciate the need and the keeping up with technology. I think it's really important, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go spend the money.
Item twelve B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve staff to apply for an inclusive playground equipment grant. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider this because park staff and the Park and Tree Board were approached about the need for inclusive playgrounds in the City of Garden City. Currently, we have really no access to playgrounds within the playground system primarily because of what our base material is, and that's sand. And so that's kind of what brought this up. But what we're here before you today is to ask for the opportunity to apply for a grant that is a $30,000 one-to-one grant that is being funded by the NRPA, which is the National Rec and Park Association, as well as Disney. And they are granting twenty-five grants, again, for that amount of $30,000. And the match that's required can be used with cash, staff time, construction costs, and design fees. And so we're coming before you to ask for permission to file for this grant, and we have funds available in our liquor tax fund to be able to provide our $30,000 and our labor and these things, whatever it would cost. The grant is due on the 12th of this month. Livewell Fenney County was instrumental in bringing this to us and kind of bringing this issue, saying, why don't we look at this and start to address this? And the Park and Tree Board is in agreement, for the most part, that we need to start looking at this stuff, so.
And this is at Harold Long Park?
That's preliminarily just getting this going. That's a site that we may look at. It's an example. We found out about the grant 10 days ago, so we're trying to get stuff moving to do it. We would have the option to canvas other parks and look at what would be the best. But we think a Harold Long would be the best because we have a bathroom there. We have a walking path there. We have a playground there already. And so we would just be able to put this right next to it. And the details of it, we really don't know, but we'd have to move quick. In June, they'll be giving us the news, whether we receive the grant or not. And if we do, then we'll come back before you. If we don't receive the grant, we'll probably put it before you in a off-week memo and let you know that we didn't receive it that way or somehow communicate that to you.
I really think this is important, and I completely support it. And I hope that not only, you know, whether or not we get this grant or not, which hopefully we would, this is just the beginning of something. And then as we look at playground design going forward, this is our goal, especially looking at the new playground possibilities at Southeast Community Park.
So I absolutely... Mayor would ask that we approve this action by our staff to apply for this grant for the inclusive playground equipment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the staff to proceed in applying for a grant, playground equipment. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item twelve C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a waiver to Code of Ordinance, Section sixty-two, dash, twelve, to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City. This is our annual discussion on fireworks, and I've asked the chiefs to present. And it looks like Chief Shelton drew the...
Maybe it's time to have like an honorary ordinance and maybe in honor of Commissioner Unruh or in honor of the chief because this is such a special discussion.
Yes, it is. Request for this waiver is specific to coincide with the sale of fireworks in the state of Kansas per KAR twenty-two, dash, six, dash, five. The discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City has been a longstanding option for the citizens during the Fourth of July holiday. The sale and discharge of fireworks in Fenney County follows KAR twenty-two, dash, six, dash, five, per minute dates of June the 27th through July the 5th. In 2015, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, the City Commission approved a waiver to the City's Code of Ordinance, Section sixty-two, dash, twelve, to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits during the days of June the 27th through July the 5th, from 10:30 AM to 10:30 PM. The history of fireworks-related fires during the dates of June the 27th through the 5th for the years 2015 through 2018. Twenty fifteen, twelve responses; sixteen, two responses; seventeen, five responses; and eighteen, one response. The Garden City Fire Department, Garden City Police Department, distributed educational flyers to citizens on the discharge dates since 2015, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The events and areas of distribution in 2018 were Florence Wilson's summer school program, Alice Daycare Center and Sands Club's safety event, St. Dominique's summer program, the Garden City employees picnic, each of the twenty-two fireworks stands, tents, and buildings. The collaboration between the Garden City Fire Department and the Garden City Police Department in conjunction with proactive patrolling, distributing the fireworks safety material and allowing for communications with the public has resulted in a positive feedback from the community. The alternates are waiver of a specific section of the City's Code of Ordinance, sixty-two, dash, twelve, to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas, during the days of June the 27th through July the 5th, 2019, from 10:30 AM to 10:30 PM. Two, waiver of the specific section of the City Ordinance Code of Ordinance, sixty-two, dash, twelve, to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas, during the days of July the 3rd through the 5th, 2019, from 10:30 AM to 10:30 PM. Alternate three would be no waiver to the City Code of Ordinance, sixty-two, dash, twelve, to allow for the discharge of fireworks within the city limits of Garden City. Staff recommends to allow the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas, from the dates of June the 27th through July the 5th, within the hours of 10:30 AM to 10:30 PM to coincide with the sale and discharge of fireworks in the state of Kansas and Fenney County. Recommendations are based on the previous years of fireworks-related calls in the City of Garden City by the Garden City Fire Department. There are no physical notes. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
I did talk to a couple of county commissioners, not in the meeting, but out of a meeting, and they don't really have an appetite to change. And really, unless they change, unless it's a real... I mean, there is still a concern. I have residents talking about this. Again, concern for their pets, concern for... There are some people that go to bed before 10:30. I don't know if anyone here does, but... Right, yeah. But so I do... I just want to make sure that we understand that this is... And I think it can be a really good time. The length of time, I mean, seems very long. I mean, that, as it wears on, seems really long. Seems like when I was younger, it used to be the day before, Fourth of July and the day after, and we really extended it. I do want to say I know that people make incredible amounts of money. And it brings sales tax in, and it also, you know, benefits a lot of really great organizations. So I appreciate your proactive approach, seriously. And you can tell by the number of incidents that have been reported, that both the police department and fire department are doing an incredible job. With that said, I still... This is hard. I mean, the 10:30, the 10:30 seems a long time, but, you know, unless we, as a county, are going to make any changes, it really can't just be the city. And I know that City Manager and I, when I first got on, I had lots of people that was the... I had articles laid on my desk, time after time. This is the one thing they really cared about. So, and I appreciate that we've taken the time to really discuss and why it does or doesn't work, so.
The state makes its... Sets its twenty, June 27th to July 5th.
And that is for the sale of fireworks in the state of Kansas. State does not determine the dates of discharge. The city does themselves.
Lauren, has anybody weighed in online? I'm just wondering if there's any public comment, you know, kind of simultaneous to this discussion? Okay.
Do you have an idea about the change in county fires during this time?
The number of county fires are down because there are discharges of fireworks in the city. Prior to us allowing the discharge of fireworks in the city, we had a very large number of fires in the county, which were very large fires.
Right.
And since we have switched that over to the city, the fires have dropped to merely nothing. We do realize it is a noise problem. However, being able to allow people to discharge fireworks in the city where there's concrete, grass, asphalt, and they have garden hoses, we want the people to do it in their front yard so we can go around, we can see what they're doing, talk to them. And it's not uncommon for us during the daytime when we're driving around, if we see children playing the fireworks, that we will stop, talk to them, talk to their parents, and give a little safety talk of who should be around when these children are discharged. And so first, on the safety side of it, it does a lot for us, just as well as a discharge. And it's been very positive for us. And once they go on sale in the state of Kansas and once they go on sale in Fenney County, they're going to start discharging them regardless. And this is our... This is the best way we can come up with to really, to handle it.
And we took something to the state legislature, but they weren't really interested either, so.
And it's better to keep them in a controlled environment instead of having people go out to just somewhere in the country, especially when we're getting around wheat harvest around that time. And there might be some fields that are pretty... You don't want to be...
You put something in there about the cleanup in that little sheet?
I'm going to say yes, because the first year that we, you approved this, people were putting things in trash cans, so as you know, we had twelve calls, and most of them are trash can calls, so we do discuss that with them. And I believe that is in our flyer, but I will check to make sure.
Check and make sure.
What we want them to do is to pile them up in front of their house, put water on them, and let them set till the next day, but they still need to clean them up.
And that was a comment that they did say, that they've not seen that much is out in the middle of the street, and so that has, I mean, that has lessened, and so...
I hope everyone, I mean, I think that between the conversations we've had with our southwest Kansas municipal partners, the county, with the fire department, law enforcement, and as it just as a group, we've really tried our very best to find the best answer for the community, and trying to take in everyone's concerns, and yet make a viable plan. And so, I hope that comes through in these presentations, and in the earlier presentation that you did at the pre-meeting earlier, I guess that was actually last year, but thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the waiver to the Code of Ordinance, Section sixty-two dash twelve, to allow the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of the presented dates.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Code of Ordinance, section, the waiver of Code of Ordinance, Section sixty-two dash twelve, in reference to consumer fireworks in the city limits of Garden City. Any further discussion?
That was alternative one, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, alternative one. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay.
Item twelve D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of community grant funds, as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're aware, we changed the way that we evaluated the community grant this year. I think that it was a really good process. We gave it to the Community Health Advisory Board. Attached to this agenda item, you found the score sheets that they did together as a group, and I will tell you, they had great discussion on this. It was awesome to have them actually going through this, reading the applications beforehand, and having specific knowledge about the projects. It was great. We had some really good discussions among them. A few things I do want to point out to you that you're probably in your mind wondering. The first is mills on wills. The entire group wanted to fully fund mills on wills, but the way the community grant has previously been set up is that if you receive funding, two years in a row, you must sit out a year. And initially, that was done so that new programs coming in would have a chance at funds, because things like mills on wills are always going to be popular among everyone in the group. And so, we did discuss at the end if that was something that maybe they wanted to look at removing from the application process, and they all feel it's a really important piece of the community grant application. So, that's the only group that wasn't allowed to get funding because of that rule. You'll also see that Safe Kids Fannie County did not receive funding, and that was not because we didn't believe it was a good program, but our board is highly made up of individuals who work for Livwell Fannie County, and on that given day, we had a few members who were unable to be present, which then brought our quorum down, which then brought the voting power down to basically three people from Livwell Fannie County being the majority that would vote on their own project, which obviously would result in a conflict. That doesn't mean you, as the commission, could not choose to fund that application, it's just that they didn't feel, and advising, staff advising them, didn't feel like that vote would be appropriate. So, that's the only reason that that application did not receive funding. You'll also note that there is thirty thousand five hundred dollars available, and that this group only granted out twenty-four thousand. You're probably wondering why. They really did a diligent job of evaluating each of these projects, and they decided that because of the change in the way we handled the grant process this year, giving it over to them, may not have allowed enough time for groups who are interested in applying for this grant, because normally, we have way more requests, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars in requests than we can fund, and so they really thought rolling that sixty-five hundred over into next year, with the idea that groups would know this was coming, that would give them more funds next year, almost thirty-seven thousand dollars that they could work with in funding groups. And so, that's kind of where that falls into place here. Other than that, I felt like they did a really good job. So, our recommendation is that you approve as it's been laid out before you, in the recommended amounts. You can, of course, choose to deviate from that and make other recommendations if you choose, and we'll note those, and distribute them as you want.
I just want to say thank you for the, that Community Health Advisory Board, the time it takes to review grants and then to make awards, thoughtful awards, and Jennifer, thank you for trying a new process, and I'm sure it was like herding cats with that group, so, but...
They did a great job.
Yeah. With that, I move to approve the Community Health Advisory Board's recommendations to award twenty-four thousand in community grant funds to eight agencies as outlined.
Is there a second? Oh, there's a second.
I just, well, I wanted to, I'm sorry, you just started making a motion before I was able to speak to this, but I feel like maybe if it was sort of a decision not to fund Safe Kids Fannie County, not on the merits of their application, but because of the logistics, the timing of the board meeting, the members present, maybe it would be incumbent upon us that we could make a separate motion even to, or amend, to maybe at least partially fund them, since there is a sixty-five hundred dollar rollover in the fund. And I'm looking at their, I would...
Which is a lot, and their application is...
Right, well, and their amount requested was twelve ninety-two. I mean, even if we could look at doing seventy percent of that, there would still be rollover for the fund for next year. It would give them some sort of help towards their project, and still kind of be consistent with what we want to do, because it sounds like it was just sort of the...
It was. It was the timing.
The real merits issue, so I apologize too for interrupting you, but I want to make that point.
So, how, did you have an amount that you wanted to grant, like a thousand dollars?
Why don't we do a thousand, just to make a round number?
I was gonna say for seven, that'd get my phone out, too.
A thousand's fine with me.
Yeah, so I'll amend that to include an additional thousand dollars to Safe Kids of Fannie County.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Was your second originally, if you would agree to amend?
I'll agree to amend that motion. Do we need to vote on the amendment?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
As long as both the motion and the second are now around twenty-five thousand for the...
For the award.
Eight agencies outlined, and an additional one thousand dollars for Safe Kids Fannie County.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
We'll try not to have any be, be that complicated again, I apologize, I just, I thought you might be amenable to that.
No, I appreciate it.
And item twelve E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution
of art grant funds, as recommended by the Art Grant Committee. Jennifer?
Mayor, Commissioners, again, we made some changes to the art grant this year. The committee did meet, we received applications from three groups, and those three groups are outlined here, and the Art Grant Committee got the benefit of only having twelve thousand dollars and having under that in requests, so although they did discuss the groups, they discussed the programs that were offered, and I think, believe in all three of them, so I don't think that was an issue. I mean, I believe that they wouldn't have funded them if they didn't think they were good projects. It's just that they got lucky, and they had enough funds to fund them all. So, staff recommends adopting the recommendation from the Art Grant Committee.
I make a motion, we approve the Art Grant Committee's recommendation to award eleven thousand three hundred and fifty to the total of three applicants.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the art grant proposal, eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Item twelve F, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of the first fifty thousand dollars of the AFAK funds, as recommended by staff.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. We, again, made some changes to the AFAK grant this year, and I believe they're panning out, just as we thought that they might, and I'm really happy with that. This is the first fifty thousand. You guys will see the other fifty thousand at your next meeting. This one, if you recall, the first fifty thousand, any agency that was working within the state statute could apply. They could not request more than six thousand dollars, and the reason we wanted to do that is because we wanted to make the first fifty thousand quickly accessible, get through the process, have it be staff recommended, something that I could check off the boxes and say, here you go, this is, this is ready and in front of you. The agencies here, out of these five, that made requests, I'm asking that you fully fund as they request, they follow the guidelines, they met the requirements for that funding, and I, I think they did a good job. We do have applications in the second round, and I do want to point out, one of the things Matt brought up is, well, it's under even the fifty thousand for the first fifty. Yes. My goal, though, is in doing this, that we are going to get people to step up, see that these funds are available, and start participating in this type of activity, because we want more people doing prevention. That's a, that's a big goal, and with this money available, that's what we need to do. I've already had people inquire about starting new programs going into next year, and how to get those funded, so I'm super excited about what this is going to bring, and would just ask that you approve, as these are recommended in front of you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the statute recommendation to award twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to a total of five agencies.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the distribution of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
I do want to say, just before we vote, but I think this is the real purpose for these AFAK funds, is what Jennifer's talking about, is prevention, and I think the applications really, that's, you could tell that the mindset has changed. It was more not just anything, but it's really this idea of how these, why these are collected and why they're being used. And so, I think, as a staff, I think you did a really great job. I appreciate the guidelines you're issuing, and then having the opportunity for other people to step up, or step in, or, you know, step out to do something really toward prevention, I think is awesome, so, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion for the AFAK funds signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item twelve G, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request for proposals of design options for a new municipal aquatic facility or facilities for the purpose of gathering further community input prior to a governing body decision. Jennifer?
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. And I'm in front of you on the pool again, and I don't see that ending anytime soon, especially with the twenty nineteen season upon us. So, jumping right in, at the last meeting, when we discussed the big pool results from the community surveys, I said I'd be back, and here I am, with an RFP that I'd like to publish today. Essentially, what it does is, it asks design firms to take our survey results and let that guide them into a design for our community. Doing this, hopefully, we would get, you know, five to ten results, take those design results, put them on our social media, our, all of our platforms, Facebook, website, and then also include them in the utility mailer. With the designs, it would be very simple, a one question or one, one selection process where people can see the designs, see what the design firms have thought that they came up with based on the survey results, and let the community engage one more time, and then bring that with all of the materials from the RFPs before you, at the end of that process, in order to make your, to evaluate those, and hopefully make a decision.
Yeah, I'm just not sure about the time for the proposals. That gives them twenty-four days. I don't know how fast those architects work, but I know how fast this one does. It takes a while to put that together, but...
I was gonna say, it's a community...
I guess we can try it, and if we have to extend it, we could extend it, I guess.
Dan gave me a little guidance. He said twenty to thirty days. I may have gone closer to the twenty than I did to the thirty, but...
Yeah.
The reason that I did that, the thought process behind that really was, is I discussed with our staff, what is my drop dead date for getting a mailer into the May, because people don't get their May utility bill till the end of May, and so my thought process was, well, then by the time we get those back, it's the first, the middle of June, and if I waited until a June mailer, then we're into July. Not that that's necessarily a problem, per se, it's just that I want you all to have as much time as possible to look over, look over what we have, and also, if we decide to do something, have enough time to move it along and, and still do water aquatics and...
Well, from my standpoint, I'd be okay with July, and putting it back on us, us to review faster, but let the design firms have...
More time.
More time to really be able to delve into all of that information that was gathered. So, if that, if it's June versus July for our benefit, I think I'd be okay with July.
I think if it's a pool, they're designing, that would be different, but when you're talking about a community design, I think that's where, give them more time, which I really appreciate, rather than community design, it doesn't have to be just a one aquatic center or whatever, but that might where...
Well, even May fifteenth...
Okay.
Would, yep.
Well, I think what Jennifer was describing is, there's a, there's a window, there're month windows, if we want to use the utility mailer, which, by the way, for the listening audience, isn't the only communication tool we're going to be using. This isn't a, I've been asked, is this the limitation of input this round, is if you receive a utility bill, and if you open it? No, well, it'll still be online and all the other, all the other avenues, but the utility billers want, so I think if you agree with the concept, you'll have some discussion over the concept, I think if the notion is, yes, we want to give more time to the people we're inviting to give us creative work, understanding that, that compresses the time that the commission, in working with the community, is going to be able to make a decision and still enter into, if you choose to do it, enter into some construction phase in time to have something open next year, or, that's a, that's presuming a lot of things. I mean, you could, you could make a decision that we want to slow roll this discussion and slow roll this construction, where we're really talking about twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Those are decisions you'll, you'll sort through in the coming months, but I think if you agree with this approach, you just say you want another month for the architects, we can make that happen. That's just an adjustment to form.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, it's a good idea, I think it's, the thing is, if they personalize it to Garden City, that's gonna take more.
Which is what I would want.
I mean, they can show you what they did for Salina.
Exactly.
But, you know, that maybe not, would not fit what we want to do, so...
So, don't think, Jennifer, are you giving, so it says price on here, are you giving them a price to shoot? I mean, based upon what we could issue in geo-bonds, or based on what, you know, if we got rid of the big pool, what we would have available every year?
Yeah, so I tried, I tried to show in here what we're spending each year, which is seven hundred thousand dollars, with the idea, in here, I include what we're currently spending, so they would be able to geo-bond that out, and I actually have that for, if any of them request, or whatever. I didn't want to include this, include the geo-bond structure in here, because obviously, anything can change, and anything can happen, and I didn't want to hold the commission or them specifically. If someone has a really, one of the things I thought about in doing this, is if a firm comes out and has a really great idea, and it falls into a different structure, or it falls into something else, I want them to include that, because we really want the survey results to influence where we go with this. I mean, I feel like that's the most important piece, is that we went and asked for all this information, and now, we want someone who's willing to take the time and the effort in using that, and finding out what's the best fit for us. So, that's kind of my goal, if that's helpful.
I make the motion to amend the, and approve the request for proposals and process to have the proposals backed by the May...
Or...
Fifteenth.
I think you can agree to it as, as to form, but build in an extra month for the architects, and then we'll figure out what date matches with the billing company.
Yeah. I'll work on that.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the concept for the new municipal aquatics facility. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're ready for the consent agenda, there are no changes. If you want to pull an item off, we can do so, discuss it separately, otherwise, the appropriate motion would be approve H one through six.
I move that we approve H one through H six on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, H one through six. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Commissioner reports? No, yes. Commissioner Unruh, you're first.
So, I just want to say congratulations to Commissioner Dick in this first meeting. We're excited to have you on board, and I moved a little bit closer to the mayor, so that's great, too. I also just want to, and I don't know if Micah's still here, I do want to say thank you, I was able to be part of the delegation that went to Washington, it was a very impactful trip. I got to spend some time at Arlington Cemetery with some of the other commissioners and staff, and that was very meaningful, but I really appreciate the time and the effort that went into planning the trip. The meeting with Senator Roberts, Senator Moran, and Representative Marshall was, I know it makes a difference, and we just want to make sure they remember. Sometimes I wasn't sure if Senator Roberts knew we were from Garden City. He said Dodd City several times, I was like, no, we're from Garden City. But I do think that the planning, I know, that goes into that, and I was able to visit with Micah, and again, what does it look like to make it even more impactful? But I thought we, we had a really great presentation, the information that we were able to hand out was very well received, the staffers were, were very, they're uniquely positioned, and I didn't really realize how that all worked until this time, so, but really listened and understood what we're trying to do. I was really excited about the water reclamation, and that they were excited about that. The chat report, incredible work, boy, we have some work to do. We've approved all these housing, and I'm just, I'm looking forward to that building going on, and any way we can incentivize, with, I mean, making sure that we're protecting our community also, but, you know, it's exciting to watch Garden City grow in that way, and make affordable housing. I did appreciate there was a comment from Lonnie Duval about businesses, and I do think that, you know, if we're going to continue to bring business in here, employment right now, if you can't find a home here, it's going to be very hard for you to move here. And so, I know that goes hand in hand, how you balance that, I'm not really sure, but I'm grateful that we are actually talking about and planning for it, so, I really appreciate that, so, that's all I have.
Commissioner Burns?
Oh, I would say the same. Welcome to Commissioner Dick, this is exciting that you're joining us, and I look forward to working with you, and I, I find that this, that the housing policy talk, the discussion, the robustness of the thinking about this in our community is exciting, and I was very encouraged by a lot of the comments made by both staff and others in the meeting this morning, that we really need to look at things from different angles, more comprehensive, attack things in different ways than we have before. I think all of us, all of us, no matter our position, whether it's part of the governing body, part of the community, and private business, have been more than willing to try many different methods to try and encourage housing, and we're all looking for the magic bullet here, but I think just being creative around this, and trying different measures to really attack this, because there is, there's a huge gap, there's a huge need, and despite our willingness and multiple tools, we haven't really been able to see the building as yet, but I think we are all willing, and so, it's encouraging to me, and I'm excited to see where the policy discussions go next. That's all I have.
I, too, would like to welcome our newest commissioner to the bench. Good things, great speech, will be happening, you know, we got a lot of things going on. I, too, was on the Washington trip, and I... I, too, was on the Washington trip, and I thought it was a very productive trip. Spring cleanup, like was mentioned earlier in the meeting, is, is going on around the community, so please take advantage of that. It's, does help our community stay clean and in a positive light, so, it is one of the things that our city does to keep our community image in a beautification type of way, in a very positive and clean-looking manner. I've had a member of people talk to me about, and I know it was a discussion topic that a lot of the other communities had that we were talking to on our trip, but I've had a, a couple of community members just talk to me about the pothole situation after our winter, and I, and I know the street department will probably be working on, looking at all those different areas and filling those up as we move into the spring. And then, the removal of the fence at the cemetery, it, it is looking really nice, actually, with, with that up there. Gives it a diff, the cemetery a whole different look from Third Street, so, that's all I've got.
Okay. Commissioner Dick?
Well, I already got my two cents at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll keep it short. Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity to serve the city, and I look forward to working with Matt Allen and the city staff and continuing to move ourselves forward. Thank you.
Very good. Well, I, too, want to welcome you, Commissioner Dick. It'll be, I think you'll enjoy it, and it's nice to have you on, on our board. Chat report was great, I enjoyed that, that update. I think, hopefully, that message gets out to some developers, and, and we'll, we'll see some housing started. Also, the Citizens Academy was kicked off. Lauren started that, and I gave a little welcome speech, and I think we had, what was it, 19 total?
Uh, we have 17.
17? Okay. So, they seemed excited, and it's a good group, and I encourage people to consider that, and any of our boards, advisory boards, there's a lot of opportunities for people. So, with that, that's all I have.